You guys ready? All right. Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order for the April 14th, 2022, Apple Valley City Council Meeting. I'd like to welcome both our in-person and virtual audiences to the meeting this evening. For our in-person attendees, as your name is called, please approach the podium to address the council. For our virtual attendees, if you'd like to speak during the public participation portion of the meeting, please press the raised hand symbol in your meeting, and the meeting organizer will let us know you wish to speak. With that, we will start our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask you to rise and join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the record that we are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It was almost like being at a concert, and you're in voices come back from where you're on stage, so.
We've got more and more.
Second item on the agenda this evening is to approve the agenda. And Tom, I know we've got a couple changes, would you like to walk us through those?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On tonight's agenda, we have no items to add. We have two that we would like to remove from the agenda. This would be on the regular agenda. This would be 5D ordinances amending chapter 95 and 130 of the city code, and then also item E, which is a resolution delegating authority to the park director. As the council is aware, this item has generated a lot of comment. We want to have the time that we need to thoroughly review those comments, to incorporate that into any changes the city may make. So for that reason, the site is not ready for action tonight.
Perfect. Thank you, Tom. With that, it would take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
The move.
A second, if you can make a comment about the one that was pulled, please.
Yeah, well, as soon as we get this done. Yep. So a motion from Councilman Burgman, and a second from Grendel. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, agenda carries. There's our next council member, right out there in the audience. It brings us to our audience participation portion of the meeting. We've got a total of 10 minutes on the agenda for this, the entirety of this item. As Councilman Grendel just mentioned, the item that we pulled was the ordinance related to removing a restriction within the ordinance regarding firearms in parks. And so while we pulled the item, a little background on that one, but we'll happy to take comments on it as well, since it's no longer on the agenda, this would be the appropriate time to take those comments. Just know that we do have a total of 10 minutes total for all of these items this evening, so we'll try to contain these and continue to take comments from there. But that item is no longer on the agenda, so there's no action tonight on that item. So with that, I did, and all of the greeting guests, I did not grab the list. There's no one signed up in the back. Thank you. I'm going to start with our virtual audience, and then we'll move on to the in-person folks. And so for our meeting organizer, is there anyone who would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, we have no one who would like to speak.
Thank you. We have no one in the virtual audience. For our in-person attendees, is there anyone who would like to speak at the public comments portion? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and go from there.
My name is Fred Cercio. I live in Burnsville. I write about the Second Amendment, so there's a few things I'd like to say about this. There's a lot of stuff people don't know because it gets hidden. The media is not real friendly about telling people about the good things about the American gun owner. So the Second Amendment's second on the list, only to the First Amendment, so it gave an idea how much importance it was to our founding fathers and to our freedom. And we saw what happened just about a year ago, where we had half a billion dollars worth of damage to the downtowns of our area, even came into the suburbs a little bit. In Minnesota, a lot of people may not be aware, but if somebody breaks into your house, you're not allowed to protect yourself. You need to run and flee. And when it's 25 below out, and you've got slippers on or bare feet, and you need to get your family, and the gun needs to be locked up, and it can't be with the ammo, and you don't have much time to really do anything. And we see what happens on the news when you're asked to do flash, instant decisions. So the good is, when we look at the 2011 FBI crime table one, that's a 20-year summary of crime. It's down every category, every year for 20 years. Matter of fact, at the end of that 20 years, you would need to increase every category two to threefold, 200 to 300%, to reach the 1994 levels, that's in which crime went down. And it went down in the states that allowed conceal and carry and pistol permits, and citizens to protect themselves, castle doctrines and things like that. The liberal states, California, New Jersey, New York, Massachusetts, DC, Maryland, Rhode Island, their crime continues to go up in double digits. They really don't allow guns, and they don't allow pistol permits and things like that. And that, it hasn't worked. I mean, they have background checks on ammo, and they don't allow pistol permits. And in New York City, it's going between the, it's going for the Supreme Court right now, because they don't allow their residents to leave their home with their pistol permits. They can go from their home to the range and back. If they get caught at the gas station or the grocery store, they can actually have their permits taken away from them and jailed. That's how strict it is. That's why it's in front of the Supreme Court. The armed citizen stops about 7,000 crimes a day in the United States, and that's been verified many times. And the Obama study, I call it, was done after the 10-year weapon ban and magazine ban. They needed to do a study. And at the end of that 10-year study, they found that it didn't lower crime at all. And the average was closer to 2.5 million defensive crime by the American citizen, and the 88,000 that the government claimed for decades was a gross underestimate. So the American gun owner does a great, great service. And they have records that, you know, as far as compared to the police, it's about the 10th, one-tenth, the amount of property damage and things like that. So when you allow people to protect themselves in their homes and things like that, the bad guys don't break in. It's like a roulette wheel. So it really lowers crime. And I was kind of surprised when I saw that you guys were going to ban, you know, pistol permit carry.
I'm going to stop you for one second there, because I think the audience in general needs some clarification on kind of how this became, came before us. Several months ago, our park director got an inquiry to rent one of our facilities. And in looking through the ordinances, this was a Ducks Unlimited-type organization that wanted to rent the facility, found out that the way the ordinance was written, and I would say the ordinance predates me and probably everybody here, technically wouldn't have allowed the permit of even a locked shotgun there. And I know some of you have heard this story, because you've heard from me differently on this one and independently of this. He brought that to us, wanted to make a change to the ordinance. Our intent is and was to remove that restriction and remove that restriction only. There was never an intent to go against state law or to ban anybody who could lawfully carry a weapon anywhere. And so I just want to be clear on what our intent was in making that ordinance change, was to be able to allow organizations that do firearm safety training, that do Ducks Unlimited banquets, those kind of things, to be able to operate without the impediment of an ordinance, right? Because whether that one is legal or otherwise, would certainly send a message that those groups are not welcome here. And that's not the message we intended to send. And we have, again, zero desire to go against state law or to ban that lawful carry within the parks as state law prohibits. So I wanted to set the record straight on what our intent was in cleaning this up. And there was never an intent, nor was there ever any writing that would have said we were intending to stop people from legally possessing a firearm in the parks in any of our facilities.
Thank you.
Not only was that not our intent, we can't do that under state law, and we don't pass ordinances that we can't enforce under state law.
Thank you. It gave me the opportunity to say some of the things that.
Yep. I don't want to restrict your comments, right? So, but I'm going to ask that we.
I talk about that all over, the things I mentioned, I talk about all over the state. I've been to the Capitol probably a dozen times, speaking as an expert witness and stuff like that.
Thank you. I don't mean to cut you short, but I do want to make sure that everyone in the room also has an opportunity to share any comments this evening. So thank you for coming this evening. Anyone else who would like to speak to the public comments section tonight? One last opportunity. I don't see anyone else stepping up, so we will go ahead and close. Oh, I'm sorry. Back in the back. After you step forward, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Name's Jerry Soriano, 13299 Findley Way.
Thank you.
Actually, more of a question, if it was for the Ducks Unlimited and for specific purposes such as that, wouldn't it have been easier to just kind of, if possible, to have just given them like a special permit, allowing them for that one-time use as opposed to changing?
We, two things with that, right? Once we have an ordinance, we can't just say, oh, you get the right to violate the ordinance, right? That's not within our power. We need to enforce the ordinances as they're written. Two, the ordinance needed updated. That was old language that just doesn't need to be there, and so that was the intent of the cleanup. So a one-time change probably doesn't accomplish that.
We did not mean to weigh into the Second Amendment. I don't know how it morphed into a much bigger issue, but you can watch the tape from our last meeting and see our intent up here.
Thank you. Thank you all. We'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting, and thanks, everybody who commented. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. And from our council members, are there any items that you would like to pull from consent? Hearing none, meeting organizer, are there any items that anyone in the virtual audience would like to pull from consent?
Mr. Mayor, there is no one who would like to pull any items.
Thank you. For our, for our, excuse me, in-person attendees, are there any items to be pulled from consent this evening and discussed separately? Hearing none, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
The move.
Second.
Motion from Grendel, a second from Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, that carries. So our next item on the agenda is a fun one. It's a chance to welcome our new police chief and have him take the oath of office. As I clumsily flipped to my notes here, bear with me one second. So I'm just going to go through a bit of history here, and then we will turn it over to our city clerk to administer the oath, if that works. So by way of background, in March 10th, 2022, we conducted interviews for our police chief position. We selected Captain Nick Francis to be our next police chief. At the March 24th, 2022 council meeting, we officially appointed Captain Francis as Apple Valley's next police chief effective April 1st. So I don't know if that's an omen or not, but we certainly hope not. A little bit of background on Nick. He has served over 20 years of law enforcement experience with the city of Apple Valley. He began his career in 2000 as a patrol officer for the city. Based on exemplary performance, he was then promoted to sergeant in 2006 and captain in 2015. He has a bachelor of science degree in law enforcement from Mankato State University and a master of arts degree in criminal justice leadership from Concordia. He's a graduate of the FBI National Academy, the Minnesota Chiefs of Police Leadership Academy, and holds an emergency management certificate from the Minnesota Department of Homeland Security. In addition, he's an adjunct professor at Concordia University. Just a few, one quick Nick story, right? So I watched this get posted on social media the day that we made the announcement, and you scroll through there, and you wonder what you're going to see for comments. And the one about halfway down couldn't exemplify anybody, Nick, any better than anything else I've ever seen, and it's a comment from somebody who lives on Garden View, and it just has to mention that they're watching a squad car pull in the parking lot at the middle school, and there's an officer helping a kid fix his bike, can't fix the bike, puts the bike in the car and drives the kid home. And that officer was Nick. And, you know, that is, that's just, I couldn't think of a more Nick story for policing in the community than that one. So we're happy to have Nick here. Welcome Chief Francis, as he assumes his new role at the city and his proud history at the Apple Valley Police Department. And I'd like you to come on up, and we can do the oath of office. For those who would like to take some pictures, please feel free to come get wherever the best picture you can is. Don't worry about stepping up here. I'm not in the picture.
Please raise your right hand and read with me the oath of the city of office. I, Nick Francis, solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police chief of the city of Apple Valley, the county of Dakota, and the state of Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability.
The chief has selected, pardon me, his family to come pin his badge on him. So I'm going to hand this to you, Nick, and welcome them up to do those honors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the kind words. I'm excited to, and I'll, I got to face these guys, because they're kind of my glasses. I'm excited to continue working, excited to wear this badge, excited to wear the uniform, but more excited just to continue a career in a fantastic city with fantastic people and a fantastic organization run by a great council. I've long said that policing and law enforcement is a team sport. I think that's what drew me to law enforcement at a pretty young age. There's very few things that you do in the field, and very few successes that you have are done by yourself, solo. There's every call, every rescue, every life-saving attempt comes as a team effort. And so as you see behind me, I've got a pretty good team of people assisting. And so that, that team has always been important to law enforcement. I think it's critical the last couple of years to have that team around. And mine, I think I would go over my time and your time and go past what the cable crew runs for the hours to name every single person here to support. But just to give you an overview, parents, in-laws, obviously my wife and children, sisters, brothers, nieces, nephews, cousins, family members from near and far, friends, mentors, college roommates, community members, and so on. And so that is just the people outside of work. And you add in all the people that work for the police department that have become family, and they are the ones that support me and support the rest of our department day in and day out. And that is what's most important to me, is to recognize everybody else. So I know the agenda item today is to introduce me and to, for me to say some words, but I want to shine the spotlight on everybody out here that I can't look at or cry, but everybody out here that supports not only me, but law enforcement and the, just the law enforcement family, so.
Chief, you and the department make us exceptionally proud, so welcome again.
Thank you. I should say, I'm sorry. I should say, I'd like to clear the room. Continue a meeting and have some order of civility in here, so with your permission, I'll escort this group onward from the rest of the meeting.
We will, we'll just take a brief pause and let those who want to make their way out the door and celebrate a bit, do so.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming, too.
Thank you.
This'll take a minute. Kind of fun to see.
Always fun to see.
Enthusiastic.
I didn't see, I didn't even see Kay back there.
Then we're going to recognize Tim, and then we'll recognize the rest, so.
Yeah, I saw him wander in. Apparently, we need a bigger outside area. When you invite the Francis family, you need a bigger outside area.
That's a girl looks different in a.
You knew he couldn't stay away long, right?
Well, you knew that he was going to be here. He was.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for that. We'll move on with item 5B, in which is to proclaim April 17th through April 23rd, 2022, as Volunteer Recognition Week. And Pam, would you like to kick us off on this one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you know, the city of Apple Valley is very fortunate to have many volunteers serve our city. And this evening, we'd like to recognize our volunteer commissioners and committee members, as well as other volunteers who contributed their time, talent, and energy to our community. The talents and skills of our volunteers have helped Apple Valley grow into the wonderful place it is in which to live and work. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite individuals in our listening audience who may be interested in volunteering on one of our committees to visit our website. When commissioner or committee member seats become vacant, they're always posted on our website, and the application form is also found on our website. In conjunction with National Volunteer Week, staff recommends the city council proclaim April 17th through April 23rd as Volunteer Recognition Week in honor and recognition of those who have and continue to serve the city of Apple Valley. The city has a policy to recognize volunteers serving on an advisory committee who have reached a recognized milestone in their service to the city. And one individual should be recognized this evening for reaching a significant milestone. Committee member Timothy Anderson served on the cemetery advisory committee for 10 years. And, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I would be happy to read the proclamation and then describe to you the actions for this evening.
Please, go ahead.
Proclamation, whereas volunteers have enriched the life of our community through their concern, commitment, and generosity of spirit. And whereas the hard work and commitment of volunteers have made our community a better place in which to live. And whereas volunteers are a vital resource and have contributed to the health, education, welfare, recreation, culture, and environment of the city of Apple Valley. And whereas the city of Apple Valley wishes to thank its volunteers for their dedicated service and their generous spirit. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota, in conjunction with National Volunteer Week, hereby proclaims the week of April 17th through April 23rd, 2022, to be Volunteer Recognition Week in Apple Valley, and urges all citizens to recognize volunteers who contribute their time, talent, and energy to our community, proclaim this 14th day of April. So with that, Mr. Mayor, there are two actions before the city council this evening. First, to proclaim April 17th through 23rd as Volunteer Recognition Week in Apple Valley. And then, second, to present the Marble Apple Service Award to committee member Timothy Anderson. And I know, I believe you also want to recognize our other committee members who are here.
I would. Let's, let's recognize them, then we will take the action items, if that works for you, yeah? So we have a number of folks who stopped by tonight, and we thank them for doing so. Recognizing people in person is always fun after the last couple of years of not being able to recognize people in person. So in the room tonight, I know we have Alan Coles from our cemetery advisory committee. Alan, where did, I saw you somewhere there. Thank you. Tim's going to make standing easy, because he's already standing in the back and looking sharp, as always. From our planning commission, we have Jody Kurtz, who I think was here and ducked out. I should recognize that David Kurtz was also here and ducked out, recently appointed to our cemetery advisory commission. Our urban affairs committee, we have Walton in the room. Were you there? There you go. Thank you. We have a number of staff that also serve on our traffic safety advisory committee. You know, one of them is out celebrating something out in the lobby right now, but Nick Francis has served on our traffic safety advisory committee. Charles Grau has served there as well. Did Charles sneak away so we couldn't recognize him? That sounds like something Charles would do, would be sneak away so we couldn't recognize him. And then Matt Som, our public works director. So again, thanks to our staff, right? Those are our evening meetings and take time away from family and those kind of things. So we appreciate that service. Let's, let's do this. Let's take the proclamation, and then I will come out and present Tim with his award. So do we have a motion in favor of the proclamation that Pam so expertly read?
The move.
Second.
A motion from Goodwin, and a second from Grendel? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that carries. And Tim, why don't you come forward?
So with our thanks, I'll get up here so I can be able to hear this. With our thanks, thank you for 10 years of service on our cemetery advisory committee. We were chatting earlier and reminiscing as you walked in that I think we twisted your arm over a burger at an establishment to actually come and serve. And so, you know, at the time, you were making some pretty big drives to come down here and serve on the committee, and we appreciate that and the expertise you brought over the years. So with that, also for your mantle, for your bookshelf, for your trophy case, is a Marble Apple in recognition of your time serving on the committee. These are two separate pieces. Please handle them carefully. Absolutely. So thank you once again.
Thank you so much.
Somewhere, we have a box, I think, for that for you as well, that we'll.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure nobody slipped in with all the people here that were on any committees. Did we miss anybody with all the people here tonight?
Okay, great.
Not used to crowds.
Exactly. Thank you for, no, thank you for that. All right. That takes us to item 5C on the agenda, which is to adopt a resolution accepting the donation of an AED from Eastview Soccer Club for use by Parks and Rec Department. And Eric and Mary are going to present this item, so come on up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to do a quick presentation. The Eastview Soccer Club is going to be donating an AED to the park system, and so Mary and I are going to tag team on this presentation. And so just a little bit of background, Apple Valley is considered a heart-safe community. 90% of cardiac arrest victims who get an AED shock within one minute will survive, and cardiac arrests account for about 20% of all deaths in Minnesota. Student athletes survive just 10% of cardiac arrest when it happens to a student. Survival rates amongst student athletes go, is about 41 to 74% when an AED shock, when they're shocked by an AED within three to five minutes of the incident. And in checking with Dakota County Communications Center over a 12-month period, we've actually had four heart-related emergencies in the Apple Valley park system. And so now the next couple of slides are going to be taken care of by Mayor.
So our goal is to donate an AED to Corey Point Park. We have a bunch of soccer fields there. Soccer's a dynamic sport, so there is a higher incident actually with soccer compared to other sports. And we would propose to have it by Field D, between Field D and the baseball fields. So this would not just be available to the soccer players or any of the fields. This is available 24/7 to the public, and it's a straight donation to the city. It's an AED in what they call a smart cabinet. These are made for Minnesota. They are tough, can handle the elements. I know Eric did some checking with some other cities. They can handle our Minnesota winters, they can handle whatever you throw at it. They're smart monitored, so you don't have to worry about, oh, is it still working? Do we have to change the battery? There's electricity brought to it. Batteries are replaced on a schedule as well as the pads. So as soon as you rip that off, it notifies 911. It takes a bunch of burst pictures, and it also notifies anyone on park staff or other people that you can program into the unit. people that you can program into the unit. And it also, so it's smart monitored. It'll notify staff if there's any issues of the batteries running low or anything like that. So again, we're just donating the, the initial unit. We will pay for all the upfront fees, pay for the installation and the electrical connection to get it all the way to Field D. We've been partnering with Mike Schoonover with the Play for Patrick Foundation. So I know they're working on installing one over at Eastview and we wanna get Cory Point Park have access as well, just to get our players covered. And then the parks department would handle the ongoing maintenance. So change pads every two years, replace the battery after four years, and then the monthly electrical cost. So it's about $600 over seven years, or each year for seven years.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this slide just represents where there are an AED in our park system right now, along with all of our police patrol vehicles have an AED and all of our fire, fire vehicles have an AED. So there are a number of AEDs available to people in the community. What's nice about this proposal is that it is available 24/7, 365, or a lot of these are in buildings and sometimes only available if staff is there to access them. So this one will obviously be available at all times. So I can turn it over and answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the donation.
Much appreciated. And on those things, you hope you never, we never, never comes out of the cabinet with any luck, but when it does, we know it's quite literally life-saving, so thank you.
That is the hope, but nice insurance policy.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, we would take a motion to accept the AED donation from Eastview Soccer Club.
Second.
Motion from Bergman, second from Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And again, once again, thank you. Next item up this evening is 5F, which is an ordinance amending chapters 91 and 95 of City Code. And I'll let Eric walk us through this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a few meetings ago, at an informal meeting, we talked about the concept of providing off-leash dog areas within our park system, specifically at Delaney and Huntingdon Parks inside the hockey rinks during the non-hockey season. And so there's some code requirement amendments needed to make that allowable. And that's what this item on the agenda is this evening. The first one has to do with chapter 91 and it deals with animals. Right now, an animal is not allowed to be off-leash and we're proposing to add to the definitions of what an off-leash dog area is. And it's a designated area within the city park where dogs can be leashed. So it's not any area or every area within the city park, but designated areas within our park system. The, we would be, all the underlying items under 91.17 would be added to the ordinance. And I won't necessarily read them all, but an unleashed dog can only be in a designated area. We're designated Delaney and Huntingdon Hockey Rinks as those designated areas at this time. Dogs must be vaccinated, they must be supervised by someone that's at least 16 years of age when they're at the off-leash area. They must be in sight of the people that are there supervising the dog. The supervisor of the dog can have no more than three dogs, et cetera, et cetera. Also needed, an amendment is to chapter 95. Generally speaking, that's where you find the rules in the park system, such as you can't drive a motor vehicle inside the park except for within a parking lot. There's no loitering, no littering, those types of things. Also within that, under, under L, deals with domestic animals, again stating that animals need to be on a leash. And in this case, we're adding to it that, that doesn't apply to the off-leash dog areas that we just are designating, assuming the council approves the amended ordinances. These are just general rules that would be posted at the dog, at the off-leash dog areas. These are not all of the rules, the, the complete list of rules was in your packet, so this is an abbreviated list. And then finally, this is the first reading. We are recommending waiving the second reading. The ordinance amendment has been properly noticed. And if, if you choose to pass these ordinance amendments, they will become effective Friday, April 22nd. And our park maintenance staff has a goal of getting things in place by plus or minus May 1st at these two park locations. With that, I can stand and answer questions.
Questions for Eric. You know, we talked about this at an informal, not, all that long ago, so this isn't the first time this group has seen this proposal. John?
I guess the question I would have, Eric, is you just mentioned it'd become effective Friday, April 22nd. Park maintenance is gonna try to have it by May 1st. Why wouldn't we move everything when it's totally, completely done?
It takes some time before the ordinance becomes effective. And I'm looking to the city clerk for that answer.
Because they can use it when it becomes effective, correct, on April, on April 22nd, but yet we have not established that everything is all in line, the signage, the fencing. That's, I'm all fine with it, but I just, I'm asking the question. I don't want somebody to come and say, I'll come.
So I think my response to that is that it's only in designated areas and we won't have designated it until we have all the signage and fencing and, and things like that up, if you will. So while we're doing it here this evening by ordinance, until we have it, have all of the pieces in place, it's not really a designated area yet. At least that would be my perspective. Maybe the city attorney would wanna weigh in.
See the attorney rapidly nodding over there, so it seems there's some agreement with that statement. If there are no other questions, we would entertain a motion to pass the ordinance amendment for chapter 91 and pass the ordinance amendment for chapter 95. I'm assuming we can take these in one motion and then waive the second reading for both of those.
So move. Second.
A motion from Goodwin and a second from Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that carries. And Eric, thank you for that.
Thanks.
Last item on our regular agenda is 5G, which is to pass ordinance amending chapter 154 of City Code regulating projecting signs. And Alex is gonna bring this one to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As noted, the requested action this evening is to pass ordinance amending chapter 154. That is the sign ordinance to regulate projecting signs. First question we always ask when we're amending an ordinance is why are we amending it? In this case, we've got a specific request from a new business in our Orchard Place Development. They have sought to install a sign that is pedestrian-oriented, shown on the right side of the screen here, also included in your packet. The signs are not intended for major advertising, they are intended to create a sense of place. Our planned developments already allow some of these. The area Orchard Place is not within a planned development zone, therefore we are going to the overall sign code in chapter 154 to add this type of regulation to it. We do believe that this will add benefit to multiple different businesses and zones. We have added it into industrial and institutional zones, you'll notice, so it's not just retail. In the event we have the types of uses such as Abdullah or things like that, then they want to place something outside of their smaller retail areas as well. The ordinance provisions, I'm not gonna go through individually. One piece I wanna touch on is that the planning commission did unanimously approve this, or recommend approval of this in March. In fact, they were hopeful that we could've brought something like this sooner. So I think that they had a lot of support for it. We have modeled the sign ordinance after the American Planning Association's model sign ordinance, research from surrounding cities, and work with the city attorney. And thus far, we've not heard any concerns from anyone other than the applicant wanting to be able to place their sign. So with that, I would open it up for questions and we are recommending waiving the second reading this evening.
Any questions for Alex? Hearing none, we look for a motion to pass the ordinance amending chapter 154 of the city sign code regulating projecting signs and to waive the second reading.
Second.
Motion from Bergman, second from Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That item carries. That brings us onto staff and council communications. Tom, I'll start in your direction. Are there any items for us this evening?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to highlight one that we've mentioned before, which is the need for additional seasonal, seasonal employees with the city of Apple Valley. Good news is we are doing better with the recruitment for the lifeguard positions. So it looks like that's going to hopefully be just fine, that we can run both aquatic facilities here this year, but we still need some more. So opportunity for employment with the city's parks department at both pools as well as Valleywood Golf Course. We have seasonal maintenance positions open as well. And we just encourage folks who are interested to get onto the city's website. Very easy to find the list of jobs that are open and encourage people to come and participate in summer in Apple Valley. It's a little difficult to picture that right now with the weather we're having.
I was just gonna say.
But it will be pool weather before we know it and we need some folks to help us, our community have a good time this summer.
I did see a 71 in the long-term forecast today, so that felt hopeful. It's the long-term forecast, it'll be different, but it looked good today. Any other items, Tom? Are there any items from council? All right, we'll move on to the calendar of upcoming events. The next regular city council meeting is Thursday, April 28th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar of events?
So move.
Motion from Goodwin, second from Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion from Grendal to adjourn and second from Bergman. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.